Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, October 6, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please join me in saluting the flag.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Argenzio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Garino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Hermios absent. Councilor Kelly?
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky?
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo?
Here.
Here, and Council President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, for Miss President. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of September 29?
All in favor, all opposed? Accepted.
Calendar item number three. The City Council will present certificates of merit to Sergeant Shawn Matthews, Sergeant Keith Lesnar, and Officer Orion Kong of the Revere Police Department for their selfless actions on August 19th of 25 to run into a burning building prior to the arrival of the Revere Fire Department to ensure that all occupants were safely evacuated.
Come on up here, guys. Hey, guys, come on up. This way, this way.
We want to shake your hand.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. How you doing, Councilor?
Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you, my pleasure. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, don't go far, stay right here. Good evening. I just want to take this opportunity to recognize some local heroes. Every day, the men and women of Revere Police Department and Fire leave their homes, go out, and not knowing what they're going to face. Their families wonder, will they come home that night? And it's evenings like August 19th that really put that perspective into play. Sergeant Lesnar, Sergeant Matthews, and Officer Kong. Sergeant Matthews, Sergeant Lesnar and Officer Kong were on a detail approximately 12:41 a.m. in the morning on August 19th, 2025. Well, assigned to a private detail at 12:19 North Shore Road, Sergeant Lesnar and Officer Kong immediately called for Fire Department and additional patrol units for assistance at their location as they ran towards 12:19 Road, 12:19 North Shore Road, and made entry to the house in attempt to evacuate any occupants inside. At this time, mind you, there was still no Fire Department on site. As Sergeant Lesnar and Officer Kong approached the door of 12:19, they were met by individuals who were running out in need of help. Although the officers inhaled large amounts of smoke, they continued to go into the property to ensure all occupants were removed. At that time, Sergeant Matthews arrived in vehicle one and was on scene shortly after. He was familiar with the residents because of calls from the past, so he went up the back and met Officer Kong at an apartment where they located a female tenant, her small dog inside, and safely removed them from the apartment. The Fire Department telephoned the ambulance, arrived on scene shortly after, and transported all occupants to Melrose Wakefield Hospital. That's pretty amazing for our police officers to do. You know, 90% of the time, we're calling 911, waiting for the Fire Department to get there. These officers reacted different and probably saved some lives. So, in recognition, the City Council would like to acknowledge of extraordinary distinguishing material actions, special recognition is hereby ordered to Officer Orin Kong from the Revere Police Department. In recognition of your selfless service, courageous actions on August 19th, 2025, Officer Kong entered a burning building at 12990 North Shore Road, Revere, Mass, prior to the arrival of Revere Fire Department to ensure all occupants were safely evacuated. Sergeant Matthews' quick response bravery and wavering dedication to the lives of others exemplify the highest standards of public service and reflect greatly upon the Revere Police Department. And witness of this hereby certificate of merit gratefully bestowed by the Mayor, City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, the 6th day of October this year of our Lord, 2025, of the Independence of the United States of America, 229th. Congratulations, Officer Kong. Congratulations, Sergeant Lesnar. And congratulations, Sergeant Matthews. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, nice to see you. Congratulations.
Calendar item number four, unfinished business. Loan order for McMacinfield in the amount of $4.2 million.
Good evening, Councilors.
Good evening.
Chris Chalamo, Superintendent Public Works, 319 Charger. Today, I'm here to give you guys a brief description about the McMacinfield project. With me also, we have Paul Greco from Weston and Sampson to answer any questions that I might not have the answers to, as well as Mike Hanahosa from the Parks and Rec Department. All right, so there was a quick little handout that you guys, that I provided, that will help give a quick gist of the presentation if you can't quite see all the slides, but there goes nothing. So, slide number one. This shows the existing conditions of McMacinfield currently. This is after the completion of Phase One, which was the installation of the drainage and raising the site itself. So, this is where, this is the starting ground for what we're working with for the next phase that you guys are going to, well, hopefully approve tonight. So, everyone, this is the materials plan of the bid project for Phase Two. The roadway improvements. There are pedestrian bump outs for the two crosswalks before and after the field on Winthrop Ave to help safely cross residents back and forth to this field. There are solar pedestrian crossing beacons on both of these crosswalks to help slow people down as they enter through and out the site. The layout here with the new retaining wall pushing out into the field has created 17 parking spaces, two handicap and 15 other. The, there is a full sidewalk replacement on the field side of Winthrop Ave with alternating tree pits and decorative lights. The decorative lights are the match to the ones on Broadway, so they'll stagger up and down the sidewalk side of the field. So, in the packet I presented you, it shows some of the retaining wall, which is a big item in this park that they're now going to provide. They are precast concrete block walls. The company that manufactures them is Ready Rock. They're 46 by 18-inch blocks. The limestone texture is the one that I distributed to you guys. Mind you, that's the texture, not the color. It should be more of a gray that we're going to have in the field to match the precast buildings. The wall up against Winthrop Ave will be approximately seven feet tall. So, if you're sitting on the field looking up, it'll be a seven-foot wall, which will provide a nice little viewing platform for everyone up along the roadway so they can look over the field and an extra spot to watch from. Oh, also, for safety reasons, Weston and Sampson has put in, so the top of this precast wall structure, it goes a foot and a half above the sidewalk itself because we know the cars are going to be parking diagonal close up against it. Yes, you will have the decorative lights, the trees, and the six-inch crib that the car will have to go through, but it's going to be, the top section is going to be reinforced with concrete and rebar to help. That was a big scary piece of mind. What else? On top of the wall, so at sidewalk level, top of the wall is a foot and a half up. Above that is a six-foot tall ornamental fence. That fence will have an opening for both pedestrian use, which opens into a staircase in a ramp leading down the right. You know what, let me, so these are the limestone blocks, specs of the block. Let me get back on track here. So, this is the Musco lighting system that was designed for this field. It is a five-mass system designed by Musco Lights. It provides 50-foot candle infield and 30 for the outfield. It's a measurement I also had to look up. It's a foot candle is just enough light to saturate one square foot of, or one square foot with one lumen of light. But I guess Parks and Rec say that will meet their requirements for both softball, baseball, and soccer uses. Next, we have a rendering of what the scoreboard will be. This is the same system Daktronics currently use at a bunch of the other stadiums. The Parks and Rec Department, do they enjoy this system? And we're just going to add this one on to the next field that we design. Okay, so, the field itself. It's a multi-purpose turf field. It has a layout on it for both soccer and soccer, softball, and baseball. So, we can encompass three different uses. The infield for the baseball and softball is a 40-60 field, so 60 feet from the pitcher's mound to home base and then 40 feet around. The outfield fence distance varies from 200 to 215 feet in the outfield, which would essentially be a homerun, but then again, you have to hit it over the eight-foot tall fence and the 20-foot netting above that. The soccer field itself is 120 by 165. So, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's like a U-10. Okay, so, younger kids. Here's a couple just renderings of the site itself. It shows the bleachers. So, up against Winthrop Ave, there will be two sets of bleachers, one on the other side. I believe it's 48 individuals per set of bleachers, which would be 144 for all three sets for viewing from the bleachers themselves. Here's another rendering showing the entranceway, which there's just mostly emergency vehicle exit, I'm sorry, entrance on the right. If you needed to get an ambulance or something down to the field, it won't be used normally by any means. The entrance to the left will be open during these games for pedestrian access. So, the netting above the fence around the field, so the fence itself is eight feet tall around the perimeter of the field. Above that, extending to a total of 30 feet on Winthrop Ave and the side that abuts Victoria Street will be 30 feet total to help prevent foul balls from making their ways into the street and into Victoria's backyards. The one on the outfield up against the two condo buildings will max out at 20 feet, so it's a little bit shorter, but still quite a ways to get a ball over there. Yeah, and there's just an overview of the whole field. I don't know, guys, did I miss anything? Is there any? Do you guys have any questions?
Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, in the past, residents were concerned because in the past, they didn't have any parking, so they were parking in the streets. Now, on Victoria Street, Haddon Street, Elm Street, you know, the local streets. Now that we have, what, 36 parking spaces? 17?
Seventeen total in front of the field.
So, and you said there's some in the park?
No, so, there's some on the, what would that be? The westbound lane of Winthrop Ave?
Okay.
That would still exist, but there's 17 spots abutting up against the field itself.
Seven, so it's 17, okay, so.
And I'm sure we would be able to utilize the boxing gym.
So, I know, we just made Victoria Street the last couple of years. We made it permit parking, so they can't park.
Correct.
People cannot park. But if it becomes a problem, I'd like to make, you know, those other streets like Elm Street and Sewell Street and the surrounding streets permit parking so people can't park there because that was a big thing back in the day. People would just park in front of people's houses and stay there for three, four hours. So, that's all I'm concerned about. And the other thing too is, is there anything, is there going to be any parking at the Old Food Bank? Can we do something there? Because we only have the boxing.
Yeah, I'm sure we can find a way to utilize that parking lot as well.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two questions. So, you answered my question about the netting and whatnot, the lighting. Is it going to be angled in a way that it's not going to disturb the butters?
Yes, so, Musco Lights has us down to an exact science. They show you exactly here. Do we have this slide here? There is, I have a, they did a whole study and they, it's amazing how they just keep the field itself lit and they don't pollute any of the other neighborhoods.
Awesome. I guess I have two more questions. The use of this field, I love that we're allowing multiple sports in there. What is the ratio? Are we going to, obviously, it's going to be permitted, I would assume, Mike. There's going to be a lot of field permits for use and things like that. Do we already have plans to start up leagues? Anything like that? Or are we expecting permit fees and rentals from current leagues that we already have? Just curious on if we're going to open with, you know, having this thing loaded up already.
Well, I think, and I don't know if Chris answered this, but when the actual date of opening is, I think we're shooting for the spring of '26, but it looks like probably closer to July.
Well, midsummer, now, we'll see.
Okay. That will bring us right into the busy season. September, if you didn't notice, is our really busy season with field hockey, soccer, football. So, this will just help us with the overage that we're in desperate need of. So, we don't have any anticipation of running leagues or anything at this moment other than giving more permits out to people who need them.
Awesome. And my last question and most important, and I want to state for the record, I was a St. Mary's Baseball League kid, okay? I wasn't in McMacin. But no plans to do a mini Green Monster?
No, not currently.
Then I vote no. No, I'm kidding.
We will have to talk about the color schemes, though. I miss the old retro green and yellow.
I mean, that's, that was a huge, a huge part of a lot of people's childhood, so just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
One more thing, I didn't touch on the Phase Three, which is, of course, would be in tandem with this. That, they already have the funding for that section, but that would be the two buildings. One would be the press box right behind home base with a, it's two stories. It has a four-by-eight window overlooking the field. That's where the controls for the scoreboard and everything will be kept, as well as the building in the back-left corner, which provides three ADA bathrooms and storage for the grooming equipment and whatever else we need for this field. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, these renderings are fantastic. I'm so excited about this project. Anytime you talk about adding a field of this magnitude to the city, multiple sports, permitting, rentals, practices, games, it's a huge, huge plus for the city and its residents. I know you guys have been working with the neighbors, the apartment building and back, considering drainage issues in the past, and we talked about how the lights will, you know, affect the neighbors, surrounding neighbors, but I think that's also a plus. Can you talk a little bit about the neighbors in the back, the drainage work that's gone into this?
So, the drainage? We're still kind of up for grabs with the condos in the back. They're kind of stalling regarding removing their, the drainage that they're dumping into the field currently, but it's, it's something we're going, we are going to address.
And you feel that the work that you guys have put in and plan to put in will be a huge improvement from the issues in the past?
Oh, my goodness, yes, yes.
Awesome. Thanks so much. It looks incredible. I can't wait to see it open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Me either.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, Superintendent, this is outstanding. You know, I have to agree with everybody that spoke before, but I have a couple of questions. On the drainage, you know, you have that major drainage pouch or box in the middle of the field. Does that go anywhere or is this natural drainage underneath?
So, that will percolate into the ground. It's, they actually removed, I think it was a 10-by-20 section in the middle underneath that structure, all the way down to the groundwater table and provided like a sandy fill to make sure that everything saturates into the ground properly.
There's no pumping station or anything?
No, no. We brought this filled up eight feet, so it is, there should be no need of any of the sort.
And I was very impressed with what I saw, so thank you for that. Regarding the scoreboards, I don't know, Michael can answer these. The photos you gave us shows three scoreboards. Are there going to be three or two?
I think it's just, one shows the back and then the two different setups for soccer versus.
One's soccer and one's baseball.
Yeah, it's just the changing of the layout. It's like a multi-purpose board.
Yeah, no, they look terrific. I hope, you know, where are we going to keep the controls of those?
That will be kept in the press box.
In the press box. Make sure they're secure and that somebody can use them. Because I know down at Garfield, it's still up in the air as far as I know, as far as being utilized since we built it.
Yeah, it will be the same as the stadium. We keep all that stuff inside the press box upstairs, up there at the stadium. So, we'll do the same thing here. But we did lose one of the controllers. We don't have a place to keep them at Garfield. So, somebody did lose one, so, yeah. Misplaced, yes.
With that, you know, the lights were answered. I'm glad, I'm glad for that, and the fencing is answered, and I'm just looking forward to a beautiful park. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Garino Sawaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so excited about this park coming into fruition. My son played there and didn't get to play for the last, the older year because it shut down. And I remember all the issues that they did have with that drainage. Now, how far out do you think fixing that drainage is going to be? Because of the building behind them.
Oh.
They didn't cooperate then, so are they cooperating now?
They're kind of pushing back, back and forth. We sent an email every once in a while. Our, the solicitor has been in contact with their condo associations. I believe they're starting to find them again. I'm not quite sure exactly how it's working out. But, again, this system underneath the field was designed for a hundred-year storm, so barring that event, we should be, okay.
Are you planning on building a concession stand?
No, but there is some storage space underneath the press box that could be utilized. I don't, I'm not really willing to speak on that one yet. I don't know if it's.
How do you not put the concession stand back there, seriously? You have to. And then also, the other concern that was just brought to my attention is the parking spots, there's 17 parking spots, you said?
Correct.
And, but it's on a bus route.
I'm sorry.
It's on a bus route, the 119 bus, right? What's going to prevent people from parking there and jumping on the bus and going to Boston?
So, we have, I have spoken with the director, the parking director, and they were talking about, well, we have been talking about possibly metering the spots to make sure they're utilized just for the park itself, but I guess we'll handle it as it, as it comes.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Trumello, for coming up. And I want to congratulate the mayor. This place has been a hole in the ground for all these years, and he's finally moved this forward, so thank you to him. Just a few questions. So, congratulations, you were able to do this without putting in a pump station. Do you need a pump station for the bathrooms, or is that also gravity?
Yes, there's a pump station for the bathrooms. There are two E1 pumps. They will be located beha, well, it's kind of hard to show you. If you can see the building in the back, in the kind of middle of the left, it's going to be directly in front of that, up against the wall. The controls will be on the wall, and it'll be a two-inch force made pumping out to the sewer line on Winthrop Ave.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And where you're putting the parking, there's phone poles there now. Where would those be relocated to?
So, engineering is, they've been working with National Grid, Verizon, a couple of the companies. The Fire Department, we actually have some lines up there ourselves, but the, they're in the process of putting work order and getting it all together to move the poles to the other sides of the road.
Okay. And you said there's flashing pedestrian lights? That old set of lights is going?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that'll be removed.
And as far as the field goes, this is all turf. There's no clay here at all?
So, the whole, everything inside of the fence is turf, including the warning track. On the upper right and lower left sides, those are going to be like grassy slopes where people can sit and look over the field as well. But yes, those will be the really only two actual grass areas of this field.
Okay. And what's the seating capacity for viewers or?
So, bleachers is 144.
144, okay. And I had bumped into Mr. Hanahosa in the hallway. The field configuration, so it's a U-10 soccer. Kid's under 10 years old.
That might be the case, yes.
Okay.
Yes, U-10 soccer.
U-10 soccer and a regulation softball field.
Correct.
So, high school, colleges, they can, they're able to play.
60-foot base paths, yep.
And a little league field for baseball. For baseball.
Also sixty-foot base paths, yep.
Sixty-foot base paths, okay. Um, I believe everything, go ahead.
That's one other thing. In the warning tracks, there's also pitching rounds for them to warm up, if it were in college or wherever else it may be.
Just from a lack of space, I think we elected to get rid of the bullpens that we had. If not, we would have had to build, uh, so a couple of retaining walls.
Right.
Um, so to save some money, we just put them in the two corners.
Okay.
So...
And you have dugouts, obviously.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So the dugouts are elevated, they're, they're not depressions.
Okay.
So there's a, going to be a screen installed in the dugout, so the, um, parents can't really like yell at their kids or talk, talk back and forth, but it will be open, so if, once the field's locked up, police or whoever it may be can be able to look down and actually see if there's anyone in the field, easily.
Okay, excellent. And so it is a U-10 regulation soccer field, but older kids could practice there if, if need be.
Hundred percent. Yeah, I mean, it's just a, a turf field, so, um, it'll help us from rain days and that it's lit is the most important thing. There won't, there won't be a whole lot of, we can't play soccer games down there. It's, it's a, it's a small space.
Right.
Um, we were able to squeeze a U-10 soccer field in there. There could be some, certainly some young soccer games going on on the weekends, but from a night standpoint, Monday through Friday, that will be, you know, for soccer practice of, pretty much of all ages. I mean, there, throw a few cones down, some small soccer nets, and, you know, they can have, they could probably even play adult four-on-four or five-on-five on the field too, so it's not, it won't necessarily be for U-10 people, but it would just be for kind of anybody, but, yeah. Permitted, don't forget.
Excellent. Now, and will this field be open to the public if anyone wants to go down there and kick a soccer ball around, or is it, will it just be open for people that get a permit?
We haven't got that far yet.
Haven't got that far, okay. Thank you very much. I'm all set, Mr. President.
Thank you, Consul. Consul Cogliano.
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. Um, just one more question that came to mind. As far as maintenance and whatnot, once it's built and opened, uh, what do we anticipate is going to be the yearly cost to maintain the, the field and the property?
So that's why we kind of stayed away from the, um, well, grass field itself for the maintenance itself, but the, uh, it shouldn't be much, other than gra... cutting the two grassy areas on either the left and right side. I don't see being much of an operational cost, other than staffing it, I'm assuming for events and things of that nature.
Thank you.
There is one cost, maybe once or twice a year, depending, it'll be somewhere around twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars for them to, uh, regroom the field. Um, they bring a magnet in also to make sure that nothing else is in the field. So we do that every year at the stadium and at the turf field. It's about twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars every time they do it.
And is it less to maintain that type of field than it is a grass field?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, hundred percent.
Just, I have, just have one more question.
I...
Okay.
Consul Zambudo.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Consul Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, we're all excited about this, and this could have happened years ago, but we had an uncooperative Little League Board that didn't want to take our advice and take our money to fix that field. One thing is that, uh, I think that somebody should commission a model or a rendering. I, I think a model is more appropriate of the Little League Park, the Little Fenway Park, and I think probably myself and my colleagues will donate the money to pay for it, uh, because this is history, this is revered history. That was a beautiful field. People came from all over to say we had a little Fenway Park and it, you know, so this is, this means a lot to a lot of us, and, and it certainly means a lot to me, and I'll be happy to donate, but we got to get someone to commission a, a nice model to duplicate what we had there. And I don't know, we can put it in glass somewhere on those premises, but, uh, anyways, that's my idea. Uh, let me just ask you a couple of technical questions. What do we have, a, a box storage for the drainage there in the center of the, of the field, or...
Yeah, it's an underground Caltech system, just to store rainwater and then slowly let it seep into the ground, back into the groundwater table.
Probably similar to what we did at the, uh, Susan B. Anthony, and, uh, I know you're, you're too young to remember what we put there, but I was part of the construction there. I went to every single construction meeting during those first two schools being built, and it's a good thing I did, because there were some things going on that would have, uh, not been good.
Also, to add to your first, uh, comment, the, if you walk down the ADA ramp, straight all the way out to the back of the retaining wall there, there's going to be a little memorial plaque dedicate this field to the previous, I believe it was the three people that was dedicated to before.
Nice, nice, but...
Keep those names on there, yeah.
We want to do something more elaborate, no question about it. But, uh, I'm excited about it, and, uh, thank you for all your efforts in the, uh, construction, overseeing the construction of this thing. It, uh, it looks like a lot of thought's gone into it, and we're going to be proud of what we have in the end, and, uh, because we are spending taxpayers' dollars on this, and that's the one thing we can't take, uh, for granted. It's six-plus million dollars, I think, uh, is the total. It's all good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Any other Consuls? Consul Argenzio.
Thank you. And this is more for, uh, Mr. Hinoza. It's always been a pet peeve of mine. Uh, I, I would hope that the field during the day isn't locked. I, I'm not in favor of public open space being locked and locking out the public, so if everything, security and everything else can be considered, that anyone that's going down there and wants to kick a soccer ball around or bat a few balls, that they'd be allowed to go in there and, and not, uh, and not be locked. Thank you.
That was more of a statement than a question, right?
Yes, that was, that was a statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Consul Grino-Swaya.
Consul Argenzio, I'm sorry, I don't agree with you. I, I'm just afraid of what is going to happen to that field if we just let it become a free-for-all.
Okay, well, by law, you can't lock out the public from a public open space. Um, that's, you can't do that. But the, residents have paid for it, tax dollars have been paid for it. You can't lock up open, public open space, so...
I still think it should be monitored or something.
We'll, we'll monitor.
It will be monitored.
Griswold's locked.
It shouldn't be. It's a, it's a, uh, peeve of mine that, uh, you know, we can discuss this all night, but I, I've talked about this for twenty years, so...
Thank you, Consul.
Thank you.
Consul, uh, Novosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your latitude. Uh, one quick question. Are there cameras at this location, anywhere?
Um, I do believe there's a camera on one of the poles out front. We're, we're definitely going to have to add some cameras around this area.
That's one way to monitor it, so it's, we're going to keep an eye on it, so I think there should be a camera or two, you know, somewhere in the field.
Definitely agree with you. And there's actually a conduit running all throughout the field, just for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Any other Consuls? Permission to speak from the chair?
Sir?
Thank you.
Can I, can I just re...
Absolutely.
Respond to, and, and I, and, um, me and Consul Argenzio have had this conversation many, many times about open space and locking and unlocking the fields. Um, you know, I've been here for thirteen years as your Director of Parks and Recreation. Paul is Superintendent, you know, before Griswold was Griswold, you know, we certainly had a lot of dirt bikes. Um, dirt bikes go through Ambrose. They have, um, tore the place up quite a bit. Um, we are having a huge problem at this stadium right now, in case you guys don't know, from vandalism. Um, they are destroying the bathrooms, so we have day bathrooms. So, you know, with, with the bathrooms here, without any oversight or security, um, you know, that will be kind of maybe up to you guys at some point in time about, you know, do we add security down there all day, and how long these facilities are open, right? We unlock the stadium at 5:00 AM every day, and it goes until 10 o'clock at night. All right? So that's a seventeen-hour day. Uh, you know, how do we pay for security around that? And we do have security at the stadium. People go into the bathrooms. We don't have cameras in there, um, and they have literally destroyed them over the last few months. So, um, again, it's just something for probably a bigger discussion, but, so before you guys kind of debate it back and forth, just know that there are pros and cons to, um, you know, if we're investing six million dollars, we wanted to make sure that it's there at 6:00 o'clock at night for the kids to use it. We've also had hash marks at the stadium ripped up, you know, as part of that open space, you know, like free, when we don't have scheduled events there. Um, we replaced thirty hash marks that were coming up. They just, they grab them, they rip them, yeah, up. So anyways, um, anyways, we can, again, discuss it all night long, but I just wanted you guys to have a little bit more information so that you guys can kind of discuss it amongst yourselves, okay?
Thank you, Michael.
That'll be a good thing for the Parks Commission, once they get, they can handle that.
Any other city Consuls? Permission to speak from the chair? Uh, thank you. Chris, uh, I want to commend you, I want to commend the mayor, I want to commend the city council, you know, the, we really dug into getting this done for a very long time. I think if there's one area where a lot of the city was willing to, to step up and, and have their tax dollars go to was, was lifting this field back up to, um, use. So I, I just think it's going to be an outstanding addition to the city. Uh, my question, will, will there be games played? Will, will the, the softball team, RHS softball team utilize this field, Michael, or, or is this just going to be a, a...
I would imagine that they would continue to play at, at Griswold. Don't forget, that's also a seven-million-dollar facility. Um, that still looks pretty good. But I would imagine they would play there on rain, or they could play their home, I mean, it, it's, it's all up in the air about where they probably want to play. If they want to play on a natural surface, they'll go to Griswold, and then if they want to play on a turf, they can go to the turf. I, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me, I'll work that out with Frank Shea.
Okay. I, just, just a question. Uh, great job, everyone involved, kudos, and, and this is a big for the city, so, thank you.
Thank you.
On the loan order for the McMackin Field, Madam Clerk, if we could have a roll call?
Shall the city council approve a loan order for McMackin Field in the amount of 4.2 million dollars? Consul Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Cogliano.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Grino-Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Herramio is absent. Consul Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Consul McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Novosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Consul President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. Public comment pursuant to Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. In pursuit of the public comment section, if you are a revered resident or business owner, and you would like to come up and speak on any motion on the agenda, please come up, give your name, address, and the number of the motion you'll be speaking on. You have two minutes. Anyone? Okay, closing that.
Next up is the Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Consul McKenna.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Um, the Appointment Subcommittee, uh, meeting had six appointments and reappointments tonight, all showed up, which was great. I would like to have a roll, roll call to vote, uh, all the six appointments out favorably. Can we, uh, take them up all together, please?
Yes. Madam Clerk, if we can have a roll call on all six together?
Shall the city council confirm the appointments as reported by Chairwoman McKenna? Consul Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Cogliano.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Grino-Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Herramio is absent. Consul Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Consul McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Novosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Consul President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the appointments have been confirmed. Next up is the Zoning Subcommittee Report.
Consul Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we know, this zoning Subcommittee, uh, met this evening at 5:30. We had two items on the agenda. Uh, the first was, uh, 25-223, an ordinance further remending the zoning ordinances the city revered relative to stormwater management. That was, uh, discussed and, and voted out favorably. I'd ask for a roll call.
Thank you, Consul. Audit on a second hearing, reading. Audit on a third and final reading.
I'll read it again.
Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve a zoning ordinance relative to stormwater management? Consul Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Cogliano.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Grino-Swaya.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Herramio is absent. Consul Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Consul McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Novosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Consul President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
Next up was the zoning ordinance establishing the Fennel Street Affordable Housing Overlay District. We had some amendments to it, and, uh, it was voted out favorably, and I would ask that this ordinance is passed. I won't call for a roll call this time. So, uh, I'm sure the clerk will read the amendments, and we'll go forward. Thank you.
Okay. Audit on a second reading as amended. Audit on a third and final reading as amended. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call for engrossment and ordainment? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call for engrossment and ordainment?
Shall the city council approve a zoning ordinance establishing the Fennel Street Affordable Housing Overlay District as amended? Consul Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Greenoswayah.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Herramio is absent. Consul Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Consul McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Novasowski.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Consul President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained as amended. Communications, calendar item number 13, communication from the city auditor relative to the Community Improvement Trust Fund for Ward 2 Shirley, for a Shirley Avenue mural.
Madam Clerk and Council, Mr. Viskey asked us just to move forward. He gave his approval and support behind this. So if we could have a roll call, unless anyone has anything to speak. Consul Novasowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is a location, a new pocket park or forest park that they just built at the corner of Shirley Avenue, Sumner Street. And it came out beautiful, and the last phase is to do a mural in that wall on that little store on the corner of Thornton Street. So, they, they put out RFPs, they had seven candidates or artists that bid to come in, and we chose two to pick from, and we're looking for the designs, and hopefully we'll have this done by November 1st.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Madam Clerk?
Shall the city council approve an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund in the amount of $9,700 for a mural in Ward 2? Consul Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Greenoswayah.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Herramio is absent. Consul Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Consul McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Novasowski.
Yes.
Yes, Consul Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Consul President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved.
Thank you, Consuls.
Calendar item number 14, communication from the Chief of Planning and Community Development relative to ongoing economic development initiatives throughout the city.
Do we have any city Consuls? Okay, this will be referred to Economic Development, November 10th.
Motions, calendar item number 15, motion presented by Consul McKenna, that the mayor requests the state police to conduct traffic enforcement on Winthrop Parkway, especially from Beauchamp to Winthrop in the interest of public safety. Vehicles traveling at high rate of speeds have taken out the streetlight poles at this location.
Consul McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just going to talk short about this. We've, in the past year and a half, we've lost six streetlights because people are going 70 miles an hour and hitting the streetlights. Thank God they're hitting the streetlights, and they're not hitting the wall and going through the wall, because the walls are not in very good shape. But I'm just asking for the state police to just monitor the speeding down there, because it's only 25 miles an hour. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Consul Cogliandro, that the mayor direct Superintendent Kelly to ensure that all teachers park as far away as possible from the Revere High School Fieldhouse polling location on Election Day. Parking congestion at a polling location can hinder voter turnout, and reserving closer spaces for voters will help maintain accessibility and participation.
Consul Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to add Consul Kelly to this motion. Two years ago, we had three locations in the city, polling locations, that were in schools that also had to deal with professional development, in-person professional development during the election day. And I know at least of a dozen Ward 3 residents that drove down to the high school, couldn't find parking, and just kept going. I really would like the school department to work with the city on not allowing in-person professional development when they have every reason to do it on Zoom. It would be probably easier for a lot of the teachers. I would just like them to either do it on Zoom or find another day to do it. Especially this year, we're probably looking at an already low voter turnout, and I know it's part of our responsibility to get people out the doors to vote, but if we don't have parking for them, why would they stop? They're not going to go out of their way to cast a vote if, you know, so, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Consul Zambudo.
I think Consul Kelly was on the motion, right, so maybe she'll call her first.
Consul Kelly.
Thank you. I just agree 100% with everything that Consul Cogliandro said. It's important, this election, more than ever. We will most likely have voter, low voter turnout, and we want to make voting easy and as accessible as it can be for our residents, and parking can be a big problem. So I think this is something that we should put in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Consul Zambudo.
Thank you very much. I think this is a great motion, and it's really needed, and I think the part of the motion that should be stressed is no, whatever they call it, Professional Development Day in person. That's absolutely ridiculous. I've been there, there was no place to park, and there is no reason to do this on Election Day. I mean, give me a break. We're in 2025, and at least do it on Zoom or whatever other internet service you have. But it is a big, a big problem, and especially in a low turnout election. This is, this is, it should be not allowed. I don't know how we do that. We're using the school. The mayor can direct the superintendent, I think, or at least appeal to her to common sense, and let's not do this again. Because it wasn't just this last election, this happened in another election. So this is, this seems to be a pattern. At Election Day, we have this professional development stuff, and we have it in person. Really ridiculous. So I applaud the, my colleagues for putting this motion in. It's really needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Any other city Consuls? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Consuls Haas and Cogliandro, that the mayor, in conjunction with the school department, be requested to install a memorial bench at the Lincoln School to honor the memory of lifelong resident and well-known volunteer, Richard Santaswasso. Mr. Santaswasso was a staple at the school for many years, and developed incredibly strong relationships with students, families, educators, and school employees.
Consul Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd like to add Consul Greenoswayah to this motion as well.
Consul Haas.
Of course. And Consul Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Richie was a great man, he was a great neighbor, he was a great volunteer, who every day walked his route and then walked to the Lincoln School to see his kids, see the kids, see his daughter who taught there for many years, and see the families. This has gone on for more than a decade at the Lincoln School. And I thought, we thought a memorial bench would be a nice touch for the families to remember his work there. And before I finish, I'd like to just read two parents' accounts from his memorial tribute wall on the Virtuccio Vazza page. And this is the first one. And he was known as Mr. Bacon. I don't know how he got the nickname from the kids, but that's what they called him, and it's, it stuck for a couple of years. But the first comment was, "Mr. Bacon enjoyed his morning walks and conversations with his favorite kids from the Lincoln School. Every day, this specific student counted down the days until Mr. Bacon came back from Florida. Heaven gained an amazing angel." The second comment is from a family that didn't even go to the Lincoln School this year. They went last year, but they still reached out, and that speaks to how much Richie affected their children, his presence. "I will forever be grateful for the imprint you left on my son's heart. Thank you for the morning walks and memories you have given my son and his friends at the Lincoln School. They truly will cherish them." And I think it's a great, great message that the kids remember him, and I know he'll be missed there tremendously at the Lincoln School. I know a lot of kids took it hard, a lot of families took it hard. He will, he will certainly be missed. His presence will be missed there on a daily basis, but I think this is a great way to remember a great revered resident that really went above and beyond, to stay in touch with the community and just be there for the young families, and that's an important thing in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Consul Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really couldn't say anything better than what Consul Haas just did. I do want to say that, you know, I know there's some pushback from the school department and the school committee. I don't understand, and if it's an issue of funding, I will gladly file a motion or send a communication and to use CIT funds to get this done. So whatever we need to do as a council, let's do it. He's a good man, and he deserves this. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Consul Greenoswayah.
Thank you, Mr. President. I couldn't agree more with what Consul Cogliandro and Consul Haas said. I've known, I knew Richie for a really long time, at least 10, 15 years. He was a member of the Point of Pines Yacht Club, so I would see him every single day. They used to tease me, "Oh, there's your girlfriend, here she comes," because he was just such a wonderful, wonderful gentleman who loved everybody. He loved seagulls more than anything in this world. He fed them every single day. I just, I have so many good memories of him. He was a kind, kind gentleman, and he really deserves this bench named after him. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Consul Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard was a dear friend of mine. Not only was he a dear friend, his house backed up to my house. He was, lived right behind me. Unfortunately, I didn't find out of his passing until after the services, and I was devastated when I found out he passed away. Wonderful man, and I can't, there's no point in trying to add to what Consul Haas said and everybody said. But he was truly, you know, it's, we say sometimes when people pass away, we may elaborate on how great they were, but this is not an elaboration. This gentleman was a, was a true gem, and he's going to be missed, and I think this is such a tribute. It's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. Any other Consuls? Consul McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I didn't know Richie, but I just wanted to add that I have two wonderful, beautiful steel benches, iron benches, that you could have one of them. So, you could have both. I think Maria Levita wanted one of them, so, I'm just saying. If you, you know, if you have pushback, and you don't have to spend your CIT money because it's in storage. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul. That was very kind. Any other Consuls? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Could I take a moment of personal privilege? So, I'd like to just wish a very happy birthday to Consul Joanne McKenna. Happy birthday, McKenna. And that is tonight's business. Have a great evening.